Okay.
So, C.C. was so kind enough to print out our last year's priority list. There are some things on there that I really want us to consider.
I brought mine with me.
Boy, that's so good. You're gonna get an A today. And plus, you show up.
You kept it from last year?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Solomon did too, but I said, I'm on thirty. So, ma'am, if you would like to speak, you have to sign up right here. If you would like to speak on any budget priorities. So, this side is so unbalanced, three to one. But that's okay. Happens on the way. He's just unbalanced. So, three councilmembers here. No, he can stay there.
Sadara's about me.
He traded. He traded on. See, that was switched. Y'all switched that. You don't like that. That's that military in there. Oh, now you wanna live on the side. All right. We have, uh, thank you, Councilwoman Gonzalez. We're gonna call this meeting to order. It is one oh five. Please ensure that you turn off all electronic devices, because this is a small room. We're now started by citizen comments. Miss, um, for the individuals that are new, you have four minutes to speak. And the council, you have one minute to respond if you choose to. Uh, and also let the record show that, uh, Councilmember Gonzalez, Solomon, Councilmember Alvarez, and Councilmember Adams is present. Councilmember Sadara is en route. Councilmember, uh, Mayor Protem Cobb had a speaking engagement at K.I.S.D., Union Road, uh, Black History Month. And she did also vote about, uh, vote against this time, so that's why she's not here. But she will be coming. And, uh, Councilmember Boyd.
I have no idea.
Okay. And Councilmember Boyd is en route. All right. We'll start off with Ms. Sherley.
Okay.
You can stand right here.
Is this being recorded for TV?
Yes, it is.
This is not TV, but it is being recorded.
Is it on TV?
It's not on TV.
It's not on TV.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, good afternoon. You have four minutes.
I'm not sure where I'm supposed to stand.
You can stand wherever you feel comfortable. Yes, ma'am. I mean, you can stand over there.
Okay. Sorry, guys. Okay. Well, thank you. Um, first of all, uh, let me say that this is the second time I am addressing the budget. Uh, me, the last time was for the budget for twenty twenty-four. However, there was a problem with the audio. So, none of the comments, uh, that were done by residents were even recorded. You couldn't hear anything. You couldn't hardly even see the people because of heads were cut off. So, I'm, uh, hoping audio guy's not asleep, that it's being recorded, because I do want to make, uh, my request heard again. This is not the first time I've asked about this. It's concerning the infrastructure with the residential part of Colleen that's considered the old part in conjunction with downtown. Now, see, all the money that's been poured into downtown, nothing has been done for the residential part of that. My sewer lines are clay, cracked. I've seen it with a camera. And all of that sewage is going out in somebody's easement. That's gross. None of the water lines have ever been replaced. Old, old water lines. Um, streets, overlay after overlay. And I've addressed this numerous times too. My street is like this person getting out of their car on the side of the street, which a friend of mine almost fell because of that. Uh, all of that needs to be taken up and redone like Ten Street. Ten Street is level. Mine is like this. That's, like I said, overlay over overlay over overlay. Plus, the material that was used were these little big pieces of tar, which ended up getting all up into my yard, and it's just gross. So, that's what I wanted to speak on again. And I'm still waiting for something to be done. I've heard promises, uh, people over the years, oh, yeah, we're taking care of that. We're doing a fund so we can address that issue. Uh, I'm still waiting. Nothing's happened yet. And, uh, anyway, if I could, uh, if I could get maybe somebody to respond to this and give me a definite, yes, it is being done. It's gonna be done. I'm still waiting. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Sher, what street is that?
I live on Smith Drive.
And that's in District, what District?
One.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Gonzalez. District one, wait a minute. Let the record show Councilmember Boyd is present and Councilwoman, um, Gonzalez, District one representative.
Sure. Well, Public Works has, um, addressed and has a line out of items that were to be taken care of in the twenty-four, twenty-five years. I'll be happy to get with Public Works and then have us follow up with Ms. Conde to make sure she's got all her answers.
Yes, ma'am. No, thank you. Is there any more or citizen comments? All right. Uh, we will now have, Ms. Law over here. Yep. All right. So, we will now have a discussion. Uh, item is DS dash twenty-four dash zero one eight. Receive input and priorities for the FY twenty twenty-five budget. Mr. K.
Yes, ma'am. May I, Council? So, staff has been working for a while on a lot of technical issues preparing for the budget. But this, uh, this workshop gives us, um, some general broad direction, things that you want, uh, to focus on. Uh, before we, uh, what we'll do is we'll go over the big ideas, our, uh, guiding principles from the comp plan, and then we'll, we'll jump into your focus and setting priorities. Then we'll begin, uh, showing you sort of what the calendar is gonna be. So, if you remember, uh, we have some identity statements and then some big ideas that are values, diversity, inclusion, safe neighborhoods, sense of family, service and stewardship of our community. Now, these are, as we go through these things, also keep in mind, um, this is what backs up the budget as well, is where we ought to be focusing our money. Um, our assets are downtown, our people, community organizations, um, Fort Cabasos, current and retired service members, and our educational partners. Aspiration, it's a culture of trust and collaboration. Unique and vibrant downtown is a cultural and economic heart of the community. Financially strong and resilient, self-sustaining local economic improvement and growth that benefits existing residents and businesses. So, the big ideas flow out of those identity statements, uh, that we will have responsible growth that ensures a more prosperous community for the long haul. Uh, our shared responsibility to establish a positive culture and environment that people want to be a part of. A truly local business ecosystem is self-sustaining, and everyone deserves access to a safe, affordable, and efficient mobility system that allows them to move freely and easily throughout their community. That's making the last point. Neighborhoods, not subdivisions, make great places for everyone. And vibrant downtowns are valuable places. So, uh, that's just sort of a reminder of all the community input that we received. This wasn't something that the council, those ideas were not something that the council demanded. It came from listening to the community in discussions. And so, given that, uh, we can talk about your, your focus and priorities, but I'll, I'll give you kind of an idea of where we will be on the budget, uh, with, with new revenue. If you think about sales tax and property tax together are about seventy percent of our general fund revenue. And, uh, sales tax, while still increasing, we have not seen the increases that we have the past couple of years. Uh, that's a statewide trend. It's not just us. But after the first quarter, we're, uh, just a little over a percent. I think it's one point two or three percent increase over the previous year. Uh, and we budgeted two point seven percent. It's a long haul to get there after a full quarter's in. Uh, that usually kind of sets the tone for where you are. So, our projections for the next year probably can't be much more than a two percent increase, something like that. And then you look at property tax, uh, with, with a couple of things combined. About the most we can hope for in increased revenues, about three and a half percent. Uh, anything over that ends up, uh, requiring a tax exemption. Usually, new growth, uh, helps, and we've had a lot of new growth, but for the past five years in a row, the new growth has been more than offset by the increase in veterans exemption. So, it's like we're going in the hole every year on, uh, property tax. So, if our two biggest revenues are somewhere between two percent and three and a half percent, we're, we're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of a three percent maybe increase in revenue in the general fund. And seventy percent of our expenses are personnel. And, uh, if you give a pay increase that just keeps people, uh, on pace with inflation, it's hard to say exactly what that is, but it's somewhere between four and five percent, we probably can't afford that much. So, giving the pay increase, we are probably spent all the available money based on the revenue streams that we're looking at for next year. Uh, now, I'm just talking general fund because the water and sewer fund and utility fund, the other two big funds, um, stand on their own with their own revenues, and they are in pretty good shape. I, I wouldn't say that, you know, we talked a little bit about on the utility fund, there might be some sort of increase on the top tier that only, that only hits the highest residential users. Solid waste rate, it's too early to say, but we're still okay shape there, even though, I, I can't remember how long it's been since the rate was increased. Somewhere between eight and ten years. Uh, but we're in pretty good shape there. So, the general fund, as usual, is the big focus. And that's not an encouraging way to start, but that's the reality of where we are with our revenues in the, uh, in the general fund. So, given that, I will, uh, turn it over to y'all to talk about the, your priorities that you want to see in the budget.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Kegel, thank you and your staff for ensuring that something that's really good to me is you all must have comprehensive plan, and that's our focus as we move forward for the council. I know that we invested in it, and we should do better be our guide when we make these decisions on the priorities for the city. And what I'm understanding, and let the record show Councilmember Sadara's here. Uh, Mr. Kegel, what I'm understanding you to say is that with the utility, water, that that's what the very only infrastructure was forced of revenue for the city, you know, that general, uh, we wrote enough, we don't have much to work with.
That is correct. There's not gonna be much of it.
And I can't say the word play. We, we don't have much.
Right. To work with. Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
And then just to kind of go back and recap, this is not something that, you mentioned it's a national trend, it's happening, but also the increase that we saw previously here, where you're for the sales tax was due to associated with COVID because of the lockdown, right? More online spending and things like that. Did you say that was part of it?
It, it's a combination of things. That's one big thing. There was, uh, additional money put into the system. That was another thing. And just before that, we started receiving more of online sales tax that we hadn't been receiving. Because the sales have been going on, but we weren't receiving the, the tax, and then we weren't receiving a lot more of that. And that's kind of plateaued as well. It's washed, washed through the system and, uh, but, but you're right, it is a statewide trend. The increases every month in sales tax have been lower than last year. There's no, there's no decreases. Overall, there's no decrease. You see, uh, you never look at sales tax just one month because it's, it's easy to have a wild fluctuation. If one big taxpayer pays late or early, or there's an audit adjustment, you just saw Temple had a big, big increase. Miles at Williams, uh, a huge audit adjustment. You never know where that money, was it being allocated to another city, or was it just not being collected? You never know that. You just know, you, you got a big payment that is an audit collection. Um, and making, those audit collections can be negative sometimes too. But a quarter in, we're a little over a percent of last year.
So, Mr. Kegel, that's what you discussed about the competitive pay, the salary? So, that should be a priority for the county?
Yes, ma'am. I would think so.
All right. Councilmember Adams.
Quick question on the, uh, sales tax.
Yes, sir.
Do you have projections of, uh, you didn't mention it, but the projections with, uh, short-term rentals? Is that included or was that certain?
That's hotel motel tax. And, uh, we have included that. Now, we, we will revise that projection because it was based on collecting earlier than we actually have started. But, yes, sir, that will be in the hotel motel budget.
What effect would that have on, you foresee? Is that also, uh, it's not going down or it's potentially go up?
Right. Our, now, we have, I guess, two forms of hotel motel tax in ways, the, the short-term rentals and the more traditional. And traditional, we've been down just a little bit.
Right.
Um, but, uh, overall, that's what we use to run the convention center.
Okay.
And for grants to the arts. And, uh, we were, when we adopted the budget, it looked like it's in pretty good shape. I think it will not be quite as good because we haven't really started collecting the SDR yet, but it's still, it still should be okay.
So, we're gonna start with Councilmember Solomon and work our way around the room. And when we're talking about Councilmember Solomon, this is your first one, is to focus on our priorities for the city. And one of the things some individuals do prioritize, maybe your district, maybe a whole, it's just something that you think that the city needs as a whole. And Mr. Kegel just gave us a quick overview, like, hey, as far as the general fund, uh, we don't have much to work with. So, we still have, and I'm not sure I was gonna ask you about this. Have we finished this whole priority list?
Well, there's notes on the right side. It says, um, let's just start with number one. Yeah, for this year, we did, but you never, ever finish that really.
With competitive pay, for sure.
Yeah, it's always there.
Okay. We can just go down, but C.C. knew, I just wanted to get on the.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a general question before we do that, if you don't mind.
Please, take your time.
Thank you. What is this amount that we have to work with that's not clear before we go on?
Well, um, I can give you a dollar amount off the top of my head, but you can expect that it's about a three percent increase over the current year. It's about, almost the best we can hope for. And, uh, seventy percent of our costs are personnel. Inflation's running higher than three percent. So, that's why I was saying, an adequate pay increase pretty much takes up everything.
Are we talking about everything, or is there?
In the general fund.
In the general.
Now, we never, we'll spend a tremendous amount of time going over every department's budget and every line item, uh, and bringing what we, what we can out, but that doesn't, that usually doesn't amount to a big number. But, uh, you can be sure there will be lots of, uh, that they'll request a lot of new positions, as they should, because the city's growing, that we won't, we'll be able to fund. And the amount last year, I didn't disagree with anything the departments had submitted. They were all solid legitimate requests, um, that didn't, didn't make it funding, funding wise. And we, we had more, a bigger increase last year in, in revenue for a variety of reasons that even back then, we knew this year was, was gonna be more of a constraint.
Okay. First of all, let you go. Uh, my, my statement to that is, um, I'm assuming everyone would like to know kind of what that number might be, what level does exist, so that we're not pushing out things or making recommendations or objectives that are just not attainable based on your opinion. So, that's all right.
But this is the first, uh, step of the process. We're kind of like the font, kind of trimming everything down. This is our first, I guess.
Yes, sir. And there's plenty, and there's more opportunity as the year goes along, but this is the first, first one.
Yeah. We'll narrow everything down to what we can do.
Right.
But right now, this is more of what we desire to see.
I think, I think, so, I think we have to keep the, the constraints in the back of our, back of our mind, but we do need to hear what your desires are. But honestly, if, um, if competitive pay is number one, we're pretty much done at that point. Because that will take more, that will take more than the available money that we have to give a pay increase that, that equals inflation. That doesn't necessarily get ahead, that's just equal inflation.
So, if no one wants to go over this list, we can just go around, because you made a good launch, let's stop right there with inflation. So, Councilmember Solomon, applause, all yours.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I see on number six, additional parks and streets alone. And of course, like you said, we are kind of like tied around on what we can do, but we certainly would like to see if it's not, uh, additional parks in District Two, but maybe improvements, uh, in, in District Two. Uh, and then I, I'd like to see across, across the city, sidewalks, the markings of, um, I don't know if that's already set.
Not for sure. Wouldn't you say the markings?
You know, like, uh, like we had incidents in District One.
Four, and Lady Kegel just said.
I understand. Gaps. And we have a pretty good list of where all the gaps are.
Got you.
Did she say anything about marking the street?
You mean with the crosswalk?
Yeah, the crosswalk.
Well, really, you only want to do crosswalks, uh, for the most part. You only want to do winter signals.
Right.
Uh, that.
What about lighting? That was, uh, really, I think that was kind of the issue.
If I may.
Yes, sir.
I think you, uh, Councilwoman Solomon. I received, uh, a brief from the city engineer, and they do have that list of gap sidewalks and where they plan to put everything in the coordinator's time chart. So, I'm not sure if he wants the brief on that. That is a good point, because we are expected to have a discussion on those infrastructure improvements based on the conversation safety. What I'm saying is, is at that meeting, I followed up to find out if Darty wears on the plan to, to hold that.
We will be going to visit fairly soon on that. It sounds like a lot of money. I think all told, about seven hundred and fifty thousand of parka money. It's not gonna go very far, but it sounds, and it is a lot. I mean, without question, it's a lot, but in comparison to the size of the problem, it's not. Uh, and what, if you don't mind, on parks, now, remember, we did have a bond issue that had some money for parks in it, and we are working on the second phase of the Ford Hood Trail. Um, we're gonna be ready to start the engineering on that before too long, and we're applying for grants. And, um, I think that's sort of the first project teed up for the, for the bond money. We have some other parkland being dedicated in District Four. And then probably our thoughts on District Two would be extending the, uh, the trail to Heritage Jokes.
Yes.
Over towards, the idea at that point is then to link those trails up with Thousand Oaks, the new development that's being worked on, and Stagecoach.
Got you.
Yeah. Those can be connected. Those are some that come to mind, and that, what I just mentioned probably far exceeds the money we had in the debt issue.
That trail going towards Harp Arts, the other way?
No, other way.
The other way.
Yes, sir. Other way. Goes back to the south and west.
Yeah. It's part of the donated land. Okay. And then, uh, this is something, uh, you talked about, Mr. Kegel, in terms of. And then, this is something you talked about, Mr. Cagle, in terms of the goal, of course?
Yes, sir.
Just improvement on that? And I mentioned, I mentioned to councilwoman Gonzalez, and of course, I know we're supposed to be going over and looking at that. But just an improvement on that, when I talk about major, we just are revving up that whole building.
Yes.
Would that be, that's would be one of our priorities too, if we could fund it.
Yes, sir. That would probably, the magnitude of that is probably something along the lines of some future debt issue. We have a couple of small projects out there now that rehabbing the sand traps that are empty now, they're just hard to dirt. That's in the works, that's funded. The next one is we're doing engineering on retaining wall that failed along number 10, is it? And, or is it 18?
18.
Excuse me, 18. And I'm fearful of what the cost is going to be on that. If you've seen that that retained wall failed, fell, and it's a good example of why you should engineer and do things right the first time, because I feel like that wall was just built. And they're, they're bound to fail. It takes a lot of work to build a retaining wall that's going to stay over time, because there's tremendous pressure behind it with the movement of the earth and as it gets wet and expands. If you don't have it anchored and built correctly, it's not going to last. I'm not for sure how old that one is. And so the engineering's underway. What we don't know now is can we repair the part that failed, which I fear that's not going to work, probably have to replace the whole thing. And then, and then we're talking significantly.
But I was more referring to the building.
Yes, sir.
The building itself, just revving it up, where people can, our citizens-
Use it?
You can use it. They can use all the entire building.
Right.
Back from, just revving it up, just using it up.
I think it's great that y'all are going out there. Hopefully, you're going to see a difference in what you saw last time.
It has changed.
It won't be improved like you're talking about, but it will be clean.
Okay. You can see it?
Yes, sir.
Making strides. Okay. That's just about it. What's the code enforcement? We will be to-
For code enforcement, well, that was one of the things that we had, that's number 21. And that was one of the priorities that I had mentioned to you, and you told me, well, the council said wait a year. And so I'm glad you brought that up, if you don't mind.
No, don't mind.
If we're doing the registration for rentals, and we will be in the hotel occupancy fees and also the registration fees, and we're looking at between 600 to 800 homes that will have to register, we would need another person. And just my opinion, we would have to have someone to make sure that they implement it, and if, once they do the registration, if they don't meet the requirements, then they will have to go back to follow up on that. So that was just something.
Okay. That's why we hired a contractor to do the registration. And Judith, correct me if I'm wrong, we still have a responsibility there. They're just collecting all the revenue and keeping account of all the registrations?
That's correct. Whenever a citizen doesn't register, that's when the communication will flow to code enforcement, and then we will take over and it will be necessary to make a combined.
So I think the question in what you're saying is, can some of that revenue-
Go to code enforcement, because we only got 10 code enforcement personnel. You can take over if you like. This is my body.
We'll look at, mayor, we'll look at that.
Thank you.
And that's it. You can continue. Because I was just asking about that in terms of, make sure I'm saying everything I wanted, especially with the parks.
Yes, ma'am.
When it comes to collect the taxes, it's themselves, they have to go to Fund 214. Now, the expression of revenue can go to general fund, but the taxes themselves have to go to Fund 214, just to make that clear.
The registration fees and also-
The registration can go to general fund, so general fund is involved when it comes to code enforcement, but the taxes themselves cannot go to general fund, they have to go to a tax system.
But you can use a certain amount of your hotel motel money. We have other revenue there as well. They help collect, but there is a limit.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So it's possible that we can do that.
To us, probably doesn't come up to funding one position, it might come of a portion of a position. But we'll look into it and see.
But even if it's not a code enforcement person, could it be someone to do the admin side of the house? Because you have to, you have to have someone, I notice the outside is going to come in and do that inspection, a third party, but say they, you're not up to coding, then how do we do that?
Right.
Somebody that go out there to ensure that they're coding.
You're correct.
Better name.
Thank you.
Counselor, I want to go.
Yes, thank you, madam. One of the, there's several, right? But I just want to start with, and I did not have a meeting with Mr. Resto, but definitely, I still want to go back to our focus on the IT that you know, it's just that we just talked about the cybersecurity infrastructure. To me, that's really important, our emergency management team and structure, process of protocol is extremely important. And so I just, I don't know what that looks like, but I would like to have us give some thought to that, and maybe they can, I'll have conversations with them as far as what that is, but that is a big concern to me, is the cybersecurity infrastructure, emergency management, building that up. Talk about our pipes and our water. We've had this conversation before, we actually had a presentation at a council meeting, I do not recall the date, regarding our pipes in the north side. The conversation at that time was that there was some work that had been already identified as far as what was needed, but of course, funding came the issue. We've talked about looking at some of the federal infrastructure funds that the federal government had, just looking at alternative sources anyways for funding for that. So I know that we're actively working on that, I just wanted to be on the record saying that, even though we're not talking about it right now, that infrastructure is definitely on our radar, and that we're actively trying to find other funding sources for water lines, parche lines, and build, rebuilding that infrastructure.
You will see an agenda item before too long. Some engineering for water line replacement. We had wanted to do what's called pipe versioning, where you put one pipe inside another, and as has happened in a lot of things, the cost increases for that service were phenomenal. And we just decided it was better to go a different route and kind of trench and remove and replace type thing, and so we'll have some engineering coming in for that. But our money being going, we're near as far as we wanted it to, so we started planning this a couple of years ago. But you will have an item on fairly soon, upcoming agenda item for engineering, and it will have specifics on where the lines should be replaced.
Thank you. The constituent management, I'd like to still also put that as a priority for, for us as well. That's number five, madam. The constituent management systems, we talked about this across the city claim, whether there's making ease of access for payments, online apps, things like that, for our constituents, kiosks, we've kind of tossed around a lot of ideas there, so I would still like for that to be a primary focus, as a, just heading in for our employees' sake, I would agree to assist for a lot of our business there. I did have a question for chief regarding the police chaplain. Does this person have to be a city employee, or could we not utilize our area pastors as a designated chaplain for?
They can be advanced, they can be employed.
But you need one, so, okay.
We have two.
We've got two.
Right.
And if somebody wanted, I mean, I'm speaking for you, but if we have other people, we welcome the help.
That is, we have two volunteers, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
We provide some support to them, they don't get a paycheck.
They don't get a paycheck, but they get like shirts, little office things.
And they like it.
If I just saw that on here, if we have that as a priority, then we can do that pretty quickly, quickly, but I'm for that.
That was yours too, number eight?
Number eight, yes, ma'am. But we can do that outside of the budget. Obviously, that would work better, of course. So there's, we've got our bonds and other things going that also tie into a lot of the other issues that we had there, so I won't belabor those points. But I did have some, I did have one other question regarding the, anything outsourced. So we had talked before about outsourcing, it's number 23. If we can start to identify ways, and we've talked about this in some departments, if you guys have a list of here as far as mobile services, but I want us to just continue to focus on identifying any other ways that we can possibly cost save by outsourcing any possible. Obviously, if we have staffing issues and being able to keep up with competitive pay, we can outsource some of those things, that could help us save on our budget, you know, ultimately. I have some other things that are also, the doubt of lighting in District 1, and we've talked about lighting again, this is also something that's already on our radar, we'd just like to keep it at the forefront, lighting across the area, you know, about your own road area, but also District 1, we've been working on that as well, so we'd just like to keep lighting on radar for this such a cycle. I do have more, but I'll leave it there for now, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember, I mean, councilmember.
First, I apologize for being late, and if you can kind of just explain the number in here, because I got big idea 112255, what is that?
Those are the numbers, if I'm correct, with the big ideas. It's not a ranking.
It's how, it's how the priority ties to the big idea from the comp line.
Oh, it all tied to the comp line, yeah, because I noticed once, and there was no threes and stuff. And then the reference number, we got 1 through 8, and then it goes to 21 through 25.
Yeah, that was on this print, so I didn't want to interrupt, but as silly as we printed, and now-
There we go, now we got, there we go.
Yes, I apologize.
There we go, it's not all the way over there yet.
So we had a request, right, as we walked in to get last, this is last year's, this is not necessarily what you have to focus on this year. This was covered in this meeting last year. And, and the far right side, it tells you whether we were able to do anything with it or not. See, some say it's in the budget, operational budget, ARPA funding, CIP or CO bond issue. We've dealt with the things that the council brought up. It wasn't 100%, we couldn't put them all in there, but the vast majority of them were ranked. And so the police does show adding other police chaplain, chaplain in blank, that, because that's not necessarily my issue.
Did we tell all the department heads that they have to cut 10% back or something?
Well, that is-
Just kidding, see if you guys are awake or something, I'm just testing.
Well, I've been through that a lot, what you do, a lot of, if you put that, they submit the, what we call the enhanced packages. Because that's additions, it's usually people, a program, a vehicle, and it's supposed to be an enhanced level of service, but what it's fallen to on us is mostly just trying to keep up the growth. But I've been there many times, and we then submit the same packages, okay, 10%, how are you cutting 10% out of your budget? Because across the board, on every line, is absolutely the wrong way to do it. You, it should be targeted, but-
No, and I agree, I think number one is competitive pay, because, you know, we're always competing with other cities. And I think that comes down to servicing our citizens, you know. The more, and besides that, I think that we need to make up on the shortage of staff personnel, I think that we need to fill those holes, try to do that as much as possible, because same thing, it gets back down to servicing our citizens, you know, so they don't have to go through all these craziness when they're trying to get things done. But I think that, and this is something that probably the council, but I think that what we need to do is probably, if there's a way to do this, but figure out ways to do some kind of, and I don't know what you would call it, like line item or something, pretty much what we did with our street maintenance fees, you know, street maintenance was always part of like general fund, and at the end, here's what goes to streets. And so I think that we need to figure out like a dedicated separate funding mechanism for certain things, I don't know exactly what that could be, it could be parks, it could be, but that would free up some money in the general fund, but then it also would create a dedicated revenue source for that particular, instead of doing what we did with our street maintenance. Now we got this dedicated line item for street maintenance, and we're not here discussing streets, you know. And so I think that we need to figure out what we can do, and the hard part goes back to us as councilmembers, is because we got to enlighten, ask our citizens, you know, where do we do that? Where do we add that? Do we add 5, 10 bucks in our utility bill, just like we did the street maintenance? So we got to figure that out. But I think that it would benefit everybody, because now we got something that's dedicated. And I don't know how much of our budget, since we're talking about parks, how much of a budget is dedicated to our parks.
Well, if you think, in the general fund, public safety is a little over 50%.
Just parks?
No, 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 public safety, police and fire is, is over 50%.
Yeah, so that would definitely stay in general funds, but I'm talking about like parks, you know, if we were to say, okay, because parks, like our police, it's not revenue generating, but we'd say, you know, this is how much we would need if we decided to do a dedicated revenue source every year for our parks. And so what I'm trying to get at is what that would look like, how much of that is, comes out of our general fund to cover our parks? And I know it's probably quite a bit, but is it like 10 million dollars, 10 million dollars, whatever it is?
I know Miranda's over there digging for the answer, and she'll, she'll give you an answer.
6.3 million.
6.3, that's it, for our parks?
Now, you know, remember, that's the expenditure side, we do generate, we do collect revenue for memberships, rentals, it's not a significant percentage of that.
So it might even be less than that.
The net is less than that, correct, Miranda? Because you're just looking at the expenditure. Yeah, so the net is not a whole lot less than that, but it could be less.
So that's a, that's a good example of what I'm talking about. If we figure, like, we're charging $10 every month for street, and how much does that generate? About, is it 4 or 5 million?
No, it's nine something million.
9 million. So if we were to say, okay, parks is 6 million, what does that equate to per citizen? Is that like 8 bucks? And then we would create a separate line item just for our parks, and say, okay, we're going to charge 8 bucks, whatever, whatever way we figure out.
Yeah, that's going to be the challenge.
That is.
I'm not for sure there's a mechanism to do that, but we're happy, happy to, yeah, I, I don't know that you can put that on the utility bill, like you can the streets.
Well, I know when we started this conversation about charging this, it was originally meant, before we dedicated to our street, to be part of our general fund originally. I don't know exactly what it was for, but we were trying to make up the shortages that we were having in the general fund. General fund, that's how we came up with this, it wasn't called the street, what was it called, some kind of, whatever fee it was, impact fees or something.
Well, yeah, we didn't do street impact fees, that's only for building new streets.
No, no, but there was a fee before we called it street maintenance that's on the utility bill. Because I remember the recommendation back when it was like 13 bucks.
Right, and we did a dollar.
And we had $1.60 after a few years, then we finally settled into 10.
Yes.
And the reason we settled into 10 is because we told our citizens, this was only going to be dedicated for our street maintenance fees. And so where I'm getting at is, we can follow that route and say, you know what, if we can figure out a funding mechanism to do that, and it's $6 million that comes out of general fund for our parks, and we figure, you know, that, look at all that money that would free up for everything else, and we're just separating that, and now we got something that's dedicated to all our parks every year, and improving and changing that quality of life. So, I mean, it's just something I want to throw at you, is out there to see if it's something viable that maybe at least entertain and see if that's, that's something that can be done. But I think that's where it's at, we got to look at figuring out other funding mechanisms, especially since, you know, we always talk about the shortages, our 100% tax exemptions, that that's great and it's going to get bigger. And I think that this kind of equal- that that's great, and it's gonna get bigger, and I think that this kind of equalizes everything where everybody pays a little bit, and we still get those services. And the question, I had one question about, you said there was a 3% increase from our current budget, but I know that, you know, when I do the numbers, I still see property values going up, which is a good thing as far as tax revenue. Do we have an estimate? I know that that doesn't come out until July or something, but do we have an estimate on this budget?
We'll get an estimate before then, way before July, but the problem is, it doesn't matter how much they go up, because the tax cap is gonna require a large rate reduction, so, in some manner, it doesn't matter how much it goes up, because the more it goes up, the bigger, the more the rate's gonna go down. That's where I came in on the property tax, that about all we're gonna get is about 3.5%, because we lose everything on new construction to the veterans exemption, and that's the kind of, the tact that you're taking here, is why we've worked and fought so hard on the veterans exemption, not against it, it's just to get the state to reimburse us. The state gave the tax break, but we paid for it greatly disproportionately impacted.
He saved money.
So, yeah, so however it goes up is almost immaterial, it, the existing property, because we're gonna go down, the more it goes up, the greater the rate decrease.
The other thing is, talking about street maintenance, I mean, are we still doing okay on that? I know that we probably gotta anticipate, I know we're going in through, hopefully, you know, what we've been told is, hopefully we'll get some kind of resolution on stagecoach, but the way I see that is, I mean, the city's gonna have to still cough up some money on that, and, you know, we got stagecoach, we're working on Ransier, hopefully something will come out of that. And so, on our street maintenance fee, are we looking at possibly doing any type of adjustments there?
I wouldn't recommend that. We have, so we had a huge backlog when we made that increase in the street maintenance fee, and you're not gonna catch up on the huge backlog overnight, but we have a plan where we make significant improvement over time. As you said, Gilmer's now under reconstruction, and Watercrest and Bunny Trail are coming up for bid, we have money for those, we have partial, well, we don't even know exactly what we have for stagecoach, we're expecting we're gonna have some money. And Ransier, we will be funded either through a series of federal, state grants, and the TERS funding on Ransier, so we believe we've got that. And of course, half of that we dedicate to crack ceiling overlays, different treatments to make the streets last longer, so we're making progress. I just saw, I don't know, it was a month or so ago, they went through this in Waco, and their street rating was actually significantly worse than ours, and they tried the same thing that we did at a lower amount, and it failed. So, I would say our street maintenance fee is very aggressive, and that was needed. It was very much needed, but over time, we're gonna catch up. So I, I wouldn't recommend that one right now. If the street in front of your house is not repaired, it doesn't matter, you know, you want yours done first, but we're working down the list, and the main thing for people to keep in mind, they see a street being overlaid, and say, well, this street over here is worse. Well, it very well may be true, but an overlay doesn't work on every street. Some streets are too far gone to overlay, and it'd be a waste of money to do it, so they gotta be removed and replaced, and that takes engineering and a lot more money. In time, yes, a lot of time. And I think a good example is Onion Road, we did an overlay on it. It's not, because the base is too inferior, that probably was not the greatest, it helped, there's no question, it helped and it was needed, but that's probably another one that needs to be on the removal list.
No, I think that's a good problem to have, when, you know, the problem is not the funding, it's, you know, this personnel, and that's, to this day, I think that that's a great thing that this council did, finally did that street maintenance, and so, with that in line, that's what I'm talking about, maybe doing something like that for, like on stuff like parks, pull that out, and can you imagine if we did something like that, all the funding that we would have for our parks, and the money, money that is freed up on our general fund, it'll solve a lot of problems, but something like that, I think it's gonna have to come from this council, it's gonna have to be, because we're the ones that are gonna have to go out and try to convince our voters to do something like that, but I think that that's what you guys and the staff need, you need something like that that we can go back, and since we have an example of how well it has worked, you know, I would like to at least try to pursue something like that.
And one thing to keep in mind, while the residential, it's $10, on commercial businesses, it can be, and it is significantly more, because it's based on, it has to be based on trips, that's, we're following the law, and so if you're an HEB or Walmart, it's a significant monthly cost.
And then the last thing, just real quick, is I know we're trying to do a bond election, is that gonna require any type of budgets, money or anything like that, to try to sell that to the consumer?
It does not require, because the, it's November, and assume it passes, we have projected four bond issues over time, you can't issue all that, that much debt upfront, it would just sit there in the bank, and the first part is gonna be for engineering and design, so there's no real, there would be no budget impact on the 25 budget from a bond election. And what we have shown you in the projects that are, that are being considered, not only the tax rate impact on the debt, but if it has operational, because if you build a rec center, you gotta have people to run it, and we, so we've shown you that, that's out in the future, it won't impact 25, but we'll have more to come up with.
All right, I think that's all I got, thank you, Mayor.
So, Sagara, are you saying, Councilmember Sagara, increase in park, in rec fees, or you saying propose a park?
No, funding mechanism, I don't know what that looks like, similar to our street maintenance, where we can separate.
$10 fee?
Whatever it is, yeah, I'm not sure, we have to figure out how much goes to park, if it's $6 million, right now we're at $10, and it's generating 9 million, so that's just a general idea, and figure out a way to make that, you know, work somehow, I don't know what the legalities are, but, yeah, then you would, every year, we won't have to worry, I think with, over time, we would have all these parks that we fight every year, it's like there's no money in here, I mean, I think we can probably build a really nice park in your area there, because, you know, over time, but I think that that's the direction we need to go, we just gotta figure out all the little details.
I have you for competitive pay, and I have you for personnel shortage in parks.
Sounds good. Funding.
All right, thank you. Mayor Procham.
Good evening. The biggest thing for me is always, I wanna get what I started with and get it completed, and that's that grounds facility building, number 13 on this list, and I, and I see where it's coming out, I wanna ensure that we are working the correct way, and that we're treating our staff. In order to, to build and to be successful, we have to keep our staff happy, and at least a minimum of what they need to have to be successful each day. Always our youth facility, our roads are always gonna be there, so we wanna continue to work on our roads, and do the best that we can with what we have, and I know we have so many different, we're gonna start looking at different grants and different things as we come in the up year. The biggest thing is taking care of people. When we take care of our staff, our youth, and our city, we're okay. I agree with most of the things that are on this list, but the number, I wish number one was grounds maintenance facility, since I started so long ago.
You could say that it is, because it's already funded.
It's funded, yes.
And we have, Andrew, we're gonna have a contract for, I guess, project management design.
We went up for bids, or our proposals, and now we're selecting, and we're interviewing some consultants to act as a project manager for a number like that, much of the police that have been in store, building, the parks maintenance facility, the fleet maintenance, so we're in the starting part of that.
All right, good deal, that's important.
Yes, ma'am, so that's funding.
Okay, as long as I can hear that, I can ride up the train with everybody else on everything else that need to be done.
Councilmember, thank you, Mayor Procham.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and I think we're, we all echo the same thing when it comes to employee pay and benefits. I did wanna kind of hone in a little bit on employee healthcare, as a former City Colleen employee myself, I know that that's sometimes an issue for the city, I don't know if he was in here.
Uh, no.
The healthcare that we're able to offer our employees now, in your opinion, are we doing better than we have before, or is it just kind of the same, or?
I think we're doing much better than we did before.
Much better, okay.
There's a lot, especially with the high deductible health plan, when the city is giving as much money to a health savings account that I can still use to pay for my doctor's appointment, or even, you know, whatever I have in urgent care, I, that's one of the things that I think that we're doing much better. So, yeah, I think overall we are, I mean, healthcare, healthcare's going into what we call a consumer type of industry, so the employee has to be, is shopping for a car, they have to look for what's the best thing for them.
Sure.
And so, yeah, healthcare's just gonna be difficult all year round, but I think we have a pretty good plan for our employees.
Awesome. Good idea.
Thank you, ma'am, I added that a little bit to put it in perspective, I agree with what she said, but when you compare our plan to, say, TriCare or federal government, it's terrible. You compare, you compare us to other city governments or private industry, we're competitive, we're a good plan. But having said that, I'll guarantee you, we still have employees that can't afford to cover dependence.
Sure.
And so, we've worked hard the past few years, I don't, when was the last time there was any significant increase on the employee side? And so, we know what healthcare costs have been doing, so it's, it's almost impossible, well, it's very difficult just to bring down the cost of stock increases, so every year we've been getting a little better, but it's, it's still not where we'd like it to be.
Sure, no, I completely understand that part, I know that's probably more of a national issue, and maybe one day we'll get a national leader that will actually help us with healthcare reform and localism. Another thing, back to the employee pay, I recall when, when I worked for the City Colleen, the city had engaged in a salary survey for all the positions that the city holds, and that kind of helped us identify, you know, positions that were really underpaid when it comes to competitive market for that position, and then we found a couple that were overpaid, you know, that's been, I left the city in 2018, so I don't know when the last time one of those has been done, but I think it'd be something good to see, you know, where all these positions land, and obviously, you don't want, you're not gonna take anybody backwards, but you may, it would help us identify maybe positions that maybe are easily overlooked, some of the more lower level, blue collar positions, maybe, you know, there's some better one for improvement there. Obviously, that always goes back to the general fund, and you wanna give employees the best pay and compensation package you can, but we're always, of course, limited by the budget. The next thing I have here on my list was, and this was mentioned earlier, was Northside Infrastructure, and that, to me, Northside is everything going through the highways, fucking downtown, North Colleen, all the aging areas. I'll see if it's in here, do we, does the city have and maintain any clay sewer mains that have never been pipe versed or rehabbed? Do we know of any of those?
Well, there's, there's a lot of, can you say, can I, yeah, absolutely. Sure, there's a lot of clay pipe that's, that's in the system still, and a lot of it is still a great check, clay pipe can last forever, but in some places it doesn't.
Sure.
So, it's, it's being able to find the bad places, it's, again, that whole approach that we can use to find it and then fix it, so that's what the smoke testing is for, we work cameras through sewer mains and all of that, so.
If we could maybe bring something back to council, you know, kind of identifying, if we had a GIS map and says, hey, look, this is the areas that have this aging infrastructure, at least that way we're aware, and the constituents, we chat to us, we're able to tell them, hey, look, this area is better or worse than our area, or yes, I see exactly what you're talking about, because we've been presented this information, we know exactly where the need is really at, so when we have these budget conversations, or when we have any dollars in the water and sewer fund, we know at least where to help prioritize them, otherwise you kind of, you know, being reactive instead of proactive, so if we, that's something that wouldn't be too cumbersome to come up with, on just a simple GIS map showing that this is the area that has the clay lines or the infrastructure that needs more attention, that'd be great.
Is one of your priorities, sort of the infrastructureing?
Going back to, this was an item that I had on there last year, I think we've made some movement on this, is, you know, we talk about water all the time, well, stormwater is a direct impact on our water supply, so the better of a job that we can do, paying attention to our stormwater runoff here in City Colleen and our MS4 permanent, the better job that, or the less work that the treatment plans will have to do to process that water, so, we talked about environmental specialist position, I believe the response at that time was, we had someone who was doing the job, but he, he wasn't licensed as a code officer himself, so there was some having to go back and forth between departments, which seemed to be kind of inefficient, so if we could kind of circle the wagons on that, I think would be great. On water as well, we had, we had a presentation about the city acquiring a CCN on water moving south, and there was an infrastructure plan, I think maybe associated with that, or conceptual infrastructure plan, obviously, again, we're talking about dollars and what we can do, but any movement that we can make on that, I think would be outstanding, again, being proactive in that area before growth gets out that way, and people start coming in with anticipation petitions.
I like that, I really do, that's my opinion.
Lighting, Mr. Solomon brought up lighting, and several residents have brought this up, and I know we don't own the street lighting system, Encore does, but I don't know if there's a way, we've used, we've also used solar lighting before in some of our parks, I know that doesn't require an infrastructure investment, you don't have to run conduit and wire it in the ground, you just stick the pole and you got light, so, maybe there's an opportunity to incorporate some more solar lighting, is it cost, cost effective or not, I don't know, I guess we find out. And then circling back to Mr. Sagara's idea about a user fee for parks, I think in, as a concept, it sounds great, there were some numbers thrown around, you know, $9 million is what the street maintenance fee currently makes, plus or minus, Parks is usually $6 million, plus or minus on expenses, but if you built a fee to cover the $6 million of expenses, you're only maintaining what you have, that wouldn't address adding new parks or making new improvement, that would be beyond that $6 million mark, so if we were to have conversations about that, to think if you're wanting to incorporate new growth, new capital improvements, and I don't even know, going back to the legal side of it, if that's even feasible or not, or if you can only do maintenance with it, I guess we'd have to figure that out. Last question, and y'all can get back to me later on this, is how many lane miles of streets does the city currently maintain?
Well, you can get to Seattle and back, I believe, with the lane miles, I don't remember exactly what the number is, but we'll get it to you.
Awesome, thank you.
Just, I can respond a couple, the salary survey, we've done one recently.
Actually, we had it, we're bringing a proposal for budget to have it for the big one, which I call the big one.
Right.
We do it every three years, and then. And then every other, all the other years, we just, we look at market and based on market, and then we go up two percent on the plan to keep up with our competition. But every three years we do a big one, and that means we look at more money and we have consults.
The little deal one going into FY '26 is the next, I don't know.
But that would depend on funding it in the '25 budget.
That's true.
Yes.
But we are in better shape than when, the time we were talking about. Because every year, in addition to, we try to move the minimum and max in each position, move it a little bit. Probably nowhere near what it should be, but a little bit. So when we finally do every three or four year salary survey, we're in a better position. But yes, it is very important. And I don't think we have that many people above the maximum anymore there. We've kind of dealt with that issue as well, not by taking money away from anybody, but over time, we've dealt with that issue.
Thank you.
Let's see, we talked, infrastructure is definitely the first one. But as relation to some of our safety items, the pipes, road network, we need to fix some, addressing the ADA requirements. Because I think that'll address some of the safety issues. The lighting, stormwater collection, I put all that under infrastructure. But with that, we also, as part of paint, we make sure we use some of our opportunities to get grant money to cover it. I'm still going to stay with the youth employment and the enrichment program. And that's even whatever support we provide to YEC additional for any projects that they have. I think that needs to stay as a budget item. And it's been talked about already, employee benefits. I kind of count that with competitive pay, but also just competitive, the package. So the healthcare, I know I agree with you a lot, some employees can't afford, still can't afford. And one of our trips, Councilman Gonzalez and I, we walked into City Hall and they were having a party. As employees come in, that was the first day of their open season for signing up for the different healthcare. I don't know, can employees right now, they have a set healthcare plan that we have? Or do they get to pick, like, ENS or any other ones? Okay, all right. So this particular city, it may be its size, but just the excitement of it, I was like, oh, okay.
Well, we have two plans you can choose from.
Okay.
And there are, there are some cities that might have, might have three or four. But like Ms. Sparks said, those days are pretty much long gone. But there are two options that you can choose from.
And then I know we give our employees retirement, but, you know, a way to set it up where it doesn't hit the budget, our general, our annual budget too much, but it's still a better retirement. Because I think that adds to the benefit package for bringing people here. We talked about it last year, but I didn't see it on the prize, but, and I thought we had funded, but you corrected me. But the grant writer position, that might be necessary to support some of the departments, or some of the things that we went out, having to put it through the general fund.
But the grant writer would, I mean, it's got to be funded somewhere.
Yeah, initially it should have.
Yeah.
But sometimes eventually with all the grants coming in, they'll cover it out too.
And I have a question on that. I would, something like that could not be outsourced to a company that does that because they specialize in different elements and different areas? That is something, maximize our dollar by outsourcing that.
It's still, because I'm not countering anybody.
No, no, that's good, no, I think it's good to be sponsored.
The Councilman, I mean, following that, Adam, when you came to grant writer, when I met with Dr. Fager at KISC, our first encounter, I mean, we talked about sharing, I told Mr. Fager, no worries, we had on there when it comes to youth.
Yeah.
Youth programs, because they needed a grant writer.
Right.
And we discussed about sharing a grant writer. That was just focus on youth, and I don't know what you mean by that.
And I agree, I think keep whatever way to limit the.
My children.
It was all this is good. But as we go through, I know we still got to put it under, as a brother's part. But if we can find another way to pay for it, I'm all for that too. Having come from that realm, you know, I don't want to see us decrease any unfilled police or fire positions, but continue the process of filling to the standard that we need to provide the right service. If it means, if we can increase the number of positions, I'm not saying do that, but don't close any positions.
So there's, it's easy, and the chief just had a staffing study done. It's easy to demonstrate the need for more officers. Intuitively, we know how much the city's grown since the last time we did a real addition. It's a lot. Doesn't do any good ahead of, you can't fill it.
Right, that's, that's.
That's kind of why our focus goes to the competitive pay. And I challenge both chiefs all the time. Fill them all, and we even have a provision in our ordinance that you can do a little overfilling if we can get there.
I saw that.
Would love to be in that position.
Yeah, I, you know, I totally agree. It kind of, that goes back, it ties, I'm tying all of them into the competitive pay.
Yep.
Because that adds to morale. And then, you know, I like to continue the downtown business grant somehow. Because I'm starting to see the return on investment with the taxes that we're receiving. But what we're paying is not as much, like the Heck building. Those, it's not just the facade, but also some of the, it's in whether it comes from tourists or from a specific line item. Then I brought this up last year, I still agree, we got to give it the times on the constituent management system. I think we took a positive step forward with the new system that Mr. Resko brought before, but add in there where it's a better way for us to contact and interact with the constituents. I agree with Councilman Gonzalez, you know, another realm I came from, the cyber emergency management. Make sure that we are protecting our assets as well as preparing for any possibilities. And I think the EOC is a right step forward. And I would like to figure out where we can get that other building up too. But, and, you know, just making sure our emergency management department, I'm not looking for a large city sized one, but make sure we got just enough to deal with any type of contingency or disaster. All right, with that even, I know we usually set money aside for contingency funding, or something, emergencies or whatever case, or have we?
For big emergencies, that's essentially the fund balance.
Okay. And then we have our investments that aren't easy to cash in. But I just want to make sure that we, I don't want to call it a rainy day fund, but something in case there's a catastrophic event, that we are able to continue to operate over a period of time. And it's not immediate, let's say a match on current budget. We definitely shouldn't be carrying fifty billion, the whole fifty million dollar surplus. But something where we know that we can still maintain the basic services we need to, for instance. I know we will get outside hits when that happens, but I think some of that should be done internally. And then I've been looking at this, but there's a, and I haven't talked to the auditor about it. But we asked the auditor to do a lot of audits, and he's limited on access. So the possibility of an assistant, what's the possibility of having an assistant auditor? If that's feasible. And I know this is just the initial, if it doesn't come up, that's not really the highest priority, but just a way to help with some of our, review of our efficiencies. And it's not, because we make him inefficient when we send him to multiple places. And the return takes a little bit longer than normal. Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question on that? Is that slotted?
It's an intern, intern.
We get a partnership with M O A, a university, we can constantly have them rotate too. If that's feasible, it, that's something that you guys can do in that M O A with CTC or Texas A&amp;M to have students, your intern throughout their field training. And you can just rotate out every year, just a question.
I have a quick question.
Thank you, sir.
The auditor now has an assistant that's back at work, right?
Intern.
That's intern. Okay.
And then, as I close out, with that current, I know we've issued some CEO programs recently. What is our, I know in our debt status, it's kind of improved over the last couple of years. But have we, how close are we to where we hit that state limit on?
Well, the state limit is, I guess you'd say is a tax rate of two dollars and fifty cents. I mean, so that's one limit. The other limit is going to be what the financial community, as they evaluate your condition.
Right.
How much of a downgrade, I mean, if we really, if you went that far, I mean, if you more than doubled our tax rate, we'd be junk bond status probably.
Yeah.
So, but I'm just, I'm kind of framing your question, what's our capacity? Well, we've been talking about that with the GEO and combined CEO bond issues for the future. And we think we're, it is sort of maxed out at, Miranda, or do you help me with the amount?
One hundred ninety-two million.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's a last resort. I just want to make sure, because I know we've had some things pay off. And we see, do we foresee any future debt paid off in the next, I mean, complete payoff in the next year?
Well, we never issue more than twenty-year debt.
Right.
So you can, you can just count on, just under twenty years from now, if you don't issue any more, you're out of debt.
Right.
So that's, that's the limit. But our debt payments are somewhat level for about the next four or five years, then it starts dropping off.
Okay, so we don't have anything coming up, like with this, this?
Not on general, on the water side we do, but not on the general fund side.
Okay, that's, and that stuff, because of the occupancy thing or?
No, it's just the, you got two separate.
Okay.
Debt issues, we keep them separate. And on the utility side, there is some reduction.
Okay. And then what Councilman Segarra mentioned, I like the idea of doing that, but it's safe to have, show a benefit to the citizens. So if you pay, and I won't look at this look directly on the status. If you're paying a fee that, whether you go to the lion's park, for example, once you pay that fee, you're a member. And as you look at that, how much, do we lose anything from that?
Oh, sure.
And then, is there still a gain, which is the intent, from paying that fee?
I mean, being a membership doesn't cover the cost a lot.
Yeah, I know.
Off the top of my head, I can't tell you the delta, but it's pretty big.
I'm just saying, so let's say we set a ten dollar fee for every household, and that gives us the money to cover this, plus some, and what's the benefit to the citizens? Then we have to explain, explain to them, I got to pay this and I don't go to the gym. Or when now you're a member of the gym, you can go without paying an additional, as an example. Not, that may not be, but we have to figure out a way to, for any of the fees that we do, explain on the immediate, because people still want that immediate benefit. Even if it's membership, it pays for whatever additional service that you're, you got to have. Thank you.
I do agree with the competitive pay being number one, maintain what we have in place for our employees, increasing that as much as possible. I'm not too concerned at this point with the park space. We've worked to find funding for that, which will be deployed over time. Gap sidewalk, street, middle of the lane, infrastructure, you guys covered a lot of those things. There are a couple, I didn't want to lay this on, the grant writer position. Just echoing on what Councilman Adams was stating, we would be good to get one for shared use within our city. Perhaps like community development, planning and development, another department if possible. I'd like to see if we could actually prioritize that, so we're saving money and making it at the same time. Emergency management staff, just echoing on that one I heard before. We have one staff who are currently, at least they have it there, emergency management director. And we would be doing well to eventually have a new staff. Downtown support, this wasn't mentioned yet, but we gave you an email from an emergency association asking what's continuing to put money to grants. I would also push to say, continue to put money into the downtown nets to maintain the growth downtown. Because we're definitely seeing returns on that. Echoing on Councilman Gonzalez's, we just want the cybersecurity, case of these events. Particularly happy to our community, those are very vocalists, if you monitor what's happening across the country. But I do want to focus on just two main areas where I think there is, we should really put some funding. Perhaps low hanging fruit, two areas. One, economic development. As we know, we have the amount we put towards KEDC. They would take advantage of and benefit from a strategic plan for KEDC. What that would do is give a five-year outlook, provide insight into analysis in the greater region, and help us to better target opportunities for growing our company here locally. This is something I've learned about, I spoke to Mr. Scott about it. And it's just incredible. The City of Temple took advantage of this opportunity. The City of Waco took advantage of this. And over time, the cities were really able to gain traction. Our EDC is gaining traction, it has been with a new direction, direct, excuse me, which is exciting. I said KEDC, so does Councilman Gonzalez. And we're seeing the progress consistently, consistently, consistently. So the idea is to build on top of that, to put a framework in place that will even better guide the future development of it. Our economic director would be on board for it. My question was, what was the cost for something like this? And it was anywhere between a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I think it's beneficial because it will complement our comprehensive plan that's in place, but also allow the board to get certified, which helps us qualify different areas. And will put Colleen in even better position than where we are. So to complement the comp plan and the progress that we're getting, that would be my recommendation, to take just that hundred and fifty thousand, which is a million and a half, million, anything like that, and prioritize that for our EDC. Obviously, we can't put millions into EDC right now, but this would help the framework in place for our guidance block if you will. The second one's a low hanging fruit. I'm not sure how often, or not how often, if you guys made that to the police range and allow. Yeah, it's an asset for our city. And it's got a lot of potential, just like our airport, just like our golf course, and our cemetery. This is something to pride, its location, what they're able to do, the capabilities, the opportunities there are phenomenal. What I'm hearing, to be more specific, is that we have departments across the country, and specifically the state, that like to come here to access our range for a number of reasons. Training, all that good stuff. You look at geography, strategically located. So I think in the future, and I wouldn't ask for it now, as we look at doing a strategic plan for our police department range, if you get a chance, take a tour of that range. Learn, and I just can't remember all the things I learned. But it was incredible enough for me to say, you know what? I think at some point, the council should put this on the radar for the range development. But to get it, to get to the last point, another thing that I believe is low hanging fruit. The police department used to have, well, they use an outdoor gym now. They took a part of the range and it's caged, they used to have AC in there, it doesn't have AC. So they don't have a dedicated indoor area to do gym type stuff, right? We take care of a fire department just square away, the police department could use some help there. The proposal right now is not to pitch a new building, construction, and like that. When I was talking to the training director, there's an opportunity to build an outdoor, it's like a set aside shipping container gym system, okay? So what is this, and why is it relevant? The police department training is focusing our officers on profit for a number of reasons. They know better than you, right? And so there's a shipping container thing similar to what they do for provosts, where you got a weight center in the outside, you pour the part, you attach it, and allows them to do that outside. Right now, they don't have that capability to do that outside, which means the property likely someone else doing this. The cost for something like that is about forty thousand for the concrete pad, forty thousand for the actual container. So I know this is kind of like, where's the budget? This is for our officers to be even better fit and fill a gap where it exists for them. So those are the two things I would want to pitch. And the reason I push them is because on previous budget discussions, we had little small things on the outside. You guys remember the citizen survey? That's about a hundred thousand, something like that. They're going to go small things that we can fit in, that will help us in the future, which I thought are possible. So that's all I got, thank you.
All right, so for mine, I agree with everything each council member's stated. I like Segarra's, plus the way Councilmember Alvarez came around and added that we want to, if this council choose to do fees, and that's what you have to do for parks, can't get around it, is that not only to maintain it, but you need fees for the operations side. So put that in, combine together. I like the way you're looking at the north side, that is one side that we really need to focus on our infrastructure. I'm a district two person, separate road is really big to me. Because when I was even, 2017, when I came home, it's always been said, and it's been pretended, that the sidewalks was going to get fixed, one of my biggest arguments. and it's no pretending, that the sidewalks was gonna get fixed, one of my biggest arguments, they started the sidewalks, and they just stopped, Sepulveda Road. They just stopped, and, and that was the lady that came here about the sidewalk, but ADA and all those things, we do have a plan for that. And I do like our infrastructure, uh, priorities, but it still goes back to me, because I'm really big on downtown Colleen. The north side, we really got to put a focus on infrastructure. We can continue to move forward to the south, and not taking any consideration, even though it's a deal first, that no one seems to really focus there, but we haven't had, and I thank you for coming here and really sharing it, because you did come last year, and you did talk about those things, so that is very important to me. And I look at the city as a whole, I don't look at it as the district from my seat. Uh, and for downtown Colleen, some of the things, to give you more business friends, I think Councilmember Adams said that, but I'm really big on what I saw this past weekend, over three thousand people downtown Colleen, and Motown downtown. Uh, Councilmember Sagara, I know I saw him there, and congratulations to you, Councilwoman Gonzalez, and also Councilmember Solomon. And they can attest, I guess, that they share their opinion and their protestant, that I saw, and I'm just saying this particular person, because I saw it, thinking, uh, Ms. Candace Cooper, she had people lined, lined outside of her business, and that's that foot traffic we was talking about to keep them in business. Lined outside, she just said, hold on, I get to you, hold on, she's trying to sign people up for picture, and the mint restaurant, uh, packed out. This is how we want to see our city growing, this goes back on the north side. We got Station Forty-two, thanks to this round of, of council members, Mr. Kay, and your team, Station Forty-two is big. I like to see something there that people can enjoy, I know they got a gas drink across the street, but I know we tight on money, but, you know, that's something that connects to your downtown Colleen, and I thank Mr. Revell and Ms. Kay and your team, and also Ms. Tiffany, everything you do, uh, especially with the CBG grants, and making the north side a better place. So, I have some, other than the firefighters, competitive pay, police department, economic development, all, everything you said is great, but I have some different, uh, I agree with everything you said.
May I, may I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
I just left Union Grove, I went there for a black history program.
I left down the way you go.
I thought that's what I was going for, but what I met was with student council students, who wanted, who wanted to say to me what they would like to see in Colleen. And do you know the number one thing that they said to me today was that, how do they get from place to place? They were concerned, yes, they were concerned about the hot buses, will they need a parent or someone of an eighteen-year-old? What if they want to go swim at the aquarium, and their parents at work this summer, how do they get there?
Thank you.
That was, that was interesting.
Yes, ma'am, so one of my things is number twenty-four, need more, and I know we spoke about, I'm not on that key committee anymore, as a subcommittee. We talked about the Uber price, and I know, uh, he gave a presentation, you wanna hear? Thank you, sir, he gave a presentation, he also gave us a dollar or not. Now, I'm not naive, Mr. Kay, but you already told us, that we do decide to move forward with our priorities, competitive pay will be the top priority. Mine says that we have ponder, and the reason I say the hot, we need grants for not only business, but we need grants for downtown Colleen to have more events to keep them in business. That would be my number one top priority in our year program, that's my three. But I would like to see us do, uh, the Uber, to have them present to us and say something, because we haven't heard back on our end. And my other priority, which is many, but this one, aviation marketing. How do we market it, how do we get more people going to the airport, why do we have a facility? It's just so many needs that we have in this city, and every council member is right. Environmental, I think that's in a special, specialty, especially, is a top priority in keeping us healthy. But it's forced me, from everything the council say, and I'm just adding this to it, the Uber for transportation, and not only help youth, but help our seniors and people that car break down, I think that's a top priority. Aviation, we have people always complaining about their airline, and this and that, beating up staff, but they just don't know, it's just like economic development. With, uh, Councilmember Board, and Gonzalez and yourself being a part of it, with me, is that we always have people saying, we want grocery stores, grocery stores, grocery store. And by the way, we are more closer than ever, and you should be hearing some, and I'd like to thank our new assistant city manager, uh, Ms. Lori. Thank you, thank you, thank you, we have been meeting, and we gonna have some good news, shake the head, that's right, right? We gonna have some good news real soon about the north side grocery store, so that's going excellent. But those are my priorities for me, more youth programs, go back to Mr. Adam, he brought that here for the summer job. He did an excellent, the C, if we can do that, the internship for Mr. Gravy, somebody said that, uh, to work with CTC. And I think that, and my number one from last year, everybody had their parks, environmental specialist, and she had the sheet. And all of that thing, other than me, we ain't got in yet, but you do need a code enforcement person to sit. Beautification of Colleen, and I was talking to Councilmember Board about this, if the council, this council would save us money, that we can all come together, and Councilmember Board, mine was too broad, he said, bring it in, that we can set aside a thing, that we get the community involved and clean up this city. We constantly want to build new things, but look at the state, and I know it's not our fault, but we can't control people littering and, and, and having, uh, unoperable cars in their driveway, but if we short on code enforcement, and council say, Mary, this is not our top priority, I will respect you. But I also respect you more if you work with me to come up with how we can work together on a project, get the community involved, to help clean up this city. And I thank Park and Rec, I thank, uh, Mr. Reynolds and his team, and every staff member, especially downtown. And Ms. Kay going and get four cabosle soldiers to help I keep our city clean, we gotta do that. If that's any priority, that would be my number one, and that's when I talk to the leadership on four cabosles, when they're trying to recruit and bring dignitaries here, the way I, and Councilmember Solomon, uh, Sagara, because he done heard him many times, the way our city looks says the image our people would perceive us outside this city, because they're coming from around the world, these are dignitaries. So, that's just one of my priorities, Councilmember Gonzalez?
So, on the low hanging, I went through that, but my, my also on the low hanging was the amphitheater, the seating. Um, we talked about, at the amphitheater by Roseherford, um, that using those limestone blocks, and you see them out in some of those outdoor amphitheaters, we have them around, we can gladly take them from Long Branch Park, please, and put them there, um, that would be great. We can, the limestone seating, not, but limestone seating, sometimes seating for the amphitheater, to make improvements there for more lighting, because once that, uh, facility is up, that amphitheater will be a great asset force to have outdoor, uh, entertainment, movies, and things like that for our kids and for our community. So, um, I do think that we need to put a little attention there if we can, at least figure out how much it's gonna cost, and again, that limestone of Long Branch.
Okay, limestone, okay, do you have any?
Yeah, those limestone blocks are for purpose.
I know, I'm just kidding.
Do you have any more alibis, we gonna go around, do you have any more, are you finished?
No, no, ma'am, I just, and the Veterans Memorial Park, um, I'll get back with Mr. Kate, Kate and Mr. Revell on that one, but we talked about that as far as our comprehensive plan, downtown area, having some green space that we controlled. And so, that Veterans Memorial Park and forth, how we can maximize that space still, that's, I'd like to keep that on the forefront of our.
It, it is, and, um, our architects are doing the planning for city hall, understand that's a priority there, and, um, we'll have a report. We have some preliminary numbers, but not the stuff you want to see, I mean, not the, not the visual, but we're still working on the layout of all those square feet that are put together, and how it's gonna fit on that two, greater two-block side, really, and, uh, so, that's, that's big.
Awesome. Do you have anything else?
No, I was just mentioning on the, uh, the micro trans.
Yes, sir. You're next, will you?
He's, he's operating. Well, right now, I think the emphasis on, was on, um, quarter, cabosle. They just opened up with that micro, I think it's more of a trial thing, and, uh, I think we're looking pretty good, and I, I will talk to them about what we can see about, uh, I do, we feared that we should have some type of presentation where we had the clean, but the, the big emphasis, the whole, it's just changed because of Fort Cabosle. Uh, the contract that they have on Fort Cabosle is really.
That would be on serve, that they don't do.
Yeah.
It's on serve.
Yeah, and, uh, but, uh, I think that's the emphasis right now, but I, I think that we'll, one of his good news about that, which is special, we can make arrangements, and do.
They know they owe us one, uh, uh, before the kickoff, so it's probably April, May, time range.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Uh, Councilman Sagara?
Just, uh, two last things, uh, in, uh, emails here, we talked about outsourcing, and, you know, I still get a lot of emails from my previous position there, but, uh, you know, I get one, and it's, uh, called Tollamy, I don't know if anybody hears of Tollamy, right? And what they do is, it says, uh, addressing problems in Colleen, and steps to maintain us off surrounding challenges. As far as, uh, what they do is they help organizations, including Temple and Dallas, to enable a data-driven approach combat, enable light and problem priority. So, uh, it's a company that we, you know, we talk about outsourcing, that can relieve some of the stress in our code enforcements, and so, they would do all that, so that's one. Uh, the other, uh, email that, uh, I think we all got this one, and this one is in behalf of the Merchants of Downtown Colleen. They request financial support for downtown Colleen, form of grants, possibly low interest loans. Downtown is gaining momentum, but support is needed, uh, grants provided by city, help facility, homegrown businesses, so that's from, CJ Nickens, the president of the Downtown Merchants Association, I know that's a challenge, but, uh, I think that we have to, look back, I think that, I know we have some grants, we still have the SOT grants and stuff like that, but if there's anything additional that we can come up with, uh, but I think a, a lot of it is just education, we need to, we need to take a look at some of these businesses that have gotten some grants, because personally, I know they're, they're going through challenges, and, uh, we need to look at them and find out if there is a solution. Otherwise, we're gonna be in the property management business here pretty soon, because, uh, you know, once, uh, whenever we do our events, it's not enough for them to sustain, whenever we do that walk-in traffic, and so, I think that we definitely need to figure out a way to touch base with them, and see if there's something that we can do, even if it's education. You get that, Mary?
I mean, I still believe in grants, and because the people that we do have, since you did call me, uh, the people that have open businesses up there, and I know Councilwoman Gonzalez can attest, and we have Ms. Kay, they are doing extremely well, and the grants was for COVID, thank you, Councilmember, I couldn't do that, Alvarez, you know, Council Alvarez, uh, the grants was during, uh, COVID, and then so many businesses had closed, and this was with the council priority, well, not this particular council, because it wasn't all the members here, uh, the council prior, and that was talked about priority. The grants was only set aside for certain things, and it was for downtown Colleen, and, and I think any business, and I, I went to a lot of the business downtown. Any business is willing to come down to our downtown part, uh, area, and we're willing to invest in them, that goes back to Councilmember, uh, Board giving, uh, the, um, economic development more money to bring in business, yes, we can put them in the park, but we still need businesses downtown. So, I think the grants come into play, and I think we can set aside some facade, I understand, I thought it was the chamber doing it. I found out from Mr. Kay and Mr. Revell, they stopped doing it, so all that hardship is on us now. Because when I, we and you were on there, they used to do them, they don't do them anymore, so I think that's an opportunity, and this council will decide that factor. Yes, ma'am, go ahead, I'll share your light.
Yes, ma'am, so, one of the things I also wanted to keep in mind is that part of our initiative as well was our Main Street designation. With us pushing for that, also through that organization, there will be other, uh, grants and business opportunities, and, and ways to kind of help continue, um, education and funding, and they'll have other exposure that we'll qualify for here very soon, um, Kate can confirm the actual dates, if we go through that, I think it's in July or something, July, right? So, that is coming, so definitely track with us on that Main Street designation, that's sort of a huge avenue, where we can maximize all the resources there, we'll be at a very, very good position.
All right, and so that's all I'm saying, but it'll be the council decision, and I do know we're not in the managing business, but we are in the business of helping people get a start.
And my point, I just want to clarify, it's not to give money away, because, you know, personally, I, I was never in favor of just giving them money, because I think that, uh, it takes a lot more than just a passion and an excitement to start a business, and what I'm trying to say is that, what they need now, there's a lot of businesses out there that the city, I think we're gonna have to come figure out a way to go out there and help them before, either way, we're gonna, that's gonna fall in our lap, and so, we need to figure out a way, okay, what's going on in this business? Because I can tell you, they are hurting, and I, I know that there's people that have gotten money, and they're not making it, you know, and it's like, okay, so, it makes us look good to say, yeah, we're giving it, but, you know, they need to be able to sustain themselves.
But in all fairness, that's all businesses, whether it's us giving them money, and if you go look at all these big businesses in the city of Colleen, which I might on call, for legal reasons, they close, so, if, if we, once we give a person an opportunity, just like you said, we're not in the management business, we gave them opportunity. That's, it didn't come from us, it came from the government, and that gave them opportunity to do something for their family, for a small business. After that, as long as they meet the requirements that was put before, to Ms. Tiffany, Mr. Revell, and Ms. Kay, and they met all those requirements, I feel the city obligation is over, because they don't have to pay us anything back, do we want a business to go out? I don't, but.
Well, and that's, again, what I'm trying to say, and I don't want to put names out there, anything like that, but my point is that we are not just giving them money and forget about them, this is city money, this is taxpayers' money, and so, we want to make sure that it is being utilized correctly, you know, and so, that is the point.
Ms. Kay, y'all have a mechanism, Ms. Kay, do y'all have a mechanism, please explain, you're the expert.
As far as helping the merchants?
Once we give them the money, and then, well, here's an example, some of the business, not downtown, but throughout the city, we funded them. Do we have a way to follow up on them?
So, we have contracts with all of them that track performance measures, uh, but there's also a huge pull within the downtown with the Merchants Association that provides support, provides resources, and they can come together on that. That being said, that there's no replacement for a good business model, and make sure that people are doing their due diligence before coming into this business.
That's right, you can, you can.
Yes, oh, ma'am. I was gonna say, no, providing, but you said education is also essential to this, right? But then luckily, with the Merchants Association, it's very robust right now, and it's got new leadership, uh, Mr. Sudey and, uh, fans are over this, but providing them then the tools that we can have access to, like this Main Street designation is going to help the merchants, we're gonna help those businesses as soon as we can get, you know, so, there's gonna be, those, those things aren't in place, they just have to be able to take advantage of it and maximize it, but we did think about that, and that's why we got it.
Thank you, Councilmember Board?
I think, I, I think that is an interesting, uh, perspective, and we'll see how that, that may play out. I want to say some compliment upon the city council now and the future to continue to complement the efforts of those who determined to establish themselves downtown. We do that by means of downtown events, for, of these grants, uh, and continue to highlight downtown, these programs, like the Main Street program, continuing to, however, have to complement their efforts, I think is us, um, helping to meet that, that issue.
Thank you, my program. My, um, you have anything else to add?
Yes, I do, I think we were to receive a report on coming in and out of Colleen, our front gates, and how we're looking out there. We don't look so good when you're coming into the city limits of Colleen, and, and, and that was really important, have we talked about?
Is it the sign we have?
That sign, we don't have no signs or anything right now, what's going on? But, you know, we were waiting on a report to hear about it, we're looking pretty ugly out there, we need to get it back.
He's, he's taking them down.
Okay. Remember, we're gonna get a report.
There was text that was involved, and they have to tell us, and correct me if I'm wrong, from what? from what, they briefed us on a couple months, or maybe last year, Tech Dot is involved, and they have to come out there, and they have to decide where we can put it, because he just cannot put it anywhere. And it may develop, is if you correct me if I'm wrong, that maybe that's just not the place to put it, because it's constantly in here.
Oh, that place, they will not let us go back, there's no doubt.
So we just got to look at the area.
We've been trying to find other places, but just drive and look, and obviously I-14 is the place, because that's where everybody comes and goes, other than 195.
Right, and there's that, the bridge that I sit on all the time.
If you're coming in from the west.
Did she say?
I said it, yeah.
I sit on top of the Welcome to Colleen sign all the time. Please don't report that.
I think, I can.
Send us a picture.
The places there, be able to put it.
It's limited.
It's incredibly limited, and on the west side, there's a fair amount that you may think is Colleen, it's not Colleen. We still might give, I mean, perhaps get permission.
So council, if you can go out and look around and see if there's any spots that you want to put that sign, right back to Mr. Kay or go up to Tech Dot.
Kay, come sit with me.
Mr., are you finished, council?
No, that was the biggest thing, was our entry and way that we leave and come to our city. There's nothing to denote what we're doing.
Mr. Zayers can give a better answer.
So the people traveling west, there really is no spot to put it, because the only spot there would be that's grass enough is where the sign used to be, and they've been getting hit, so they took it down. Everywhere else, you're dealing with on-ramps, off-ramps, overpasses, and you're within the clear zone, where the state does not allow you to put in signs. So coming the westbound direction, so coming out of Belton, there's really no feasible spot to put a sign. Now coming eastbound, there is one possible location over there by Clerd Green, that we could put one sign on, at that direction, so coming from Copper's Cove, but that's really the only spot that we were able to see down the whole freeway.
And the signs that you see coming in from Austin, from that 195, we can't make anything as big, that's the one that I sit on all the time, and it's large, I know if you got to climb up it, you got to have a look, but I'm thinking if we make them up instead of down.
You're still in the area that clears out for anyone leaving, but the Tech Dot looks at what it clears out, some of the remaining, and so what's the possibility of getting in? Our last one got it three times, well, I don't know how, but it did, but that's what they, so they have a certain set of rules, they have a manual, and unfortunately, there's just, for that whole direction, and without just the way the topography and everything, there's nowhere we could go.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am, we got to get back to budget priority. Thank you, Mayor Proton, anything else? Okay, Councilmember Adams?
I just, three quick alibis. One, I know that planning is coming back to the car wash is the only.
This is priority, city priority.
Yeah, I'm getting, leading into what I'm saying, but part of that is not going to be in there, it's a certification process, which may be, require some resources from the city. And so I won't go into detail on that again until they do their presentation. Second one is the, Kate Temple, there's a number of projects that I know the TAC has already talked about with beautificators, and we talked about the policy bill, and that could potentially address some of the things that we've already said, and we did get a brief on the microtransits as well as the policy. A lot of people still have some concerns with it, including folks from Temple. And then the grant thing, I think I understand Mr. Sagara's point, and we, some of that money of Harper money, I guess if we can get a little bit of whether it's been obligated, which was required by the federal government, so we don't have to, we don't get caught.
Was it 92,000, though?
Okay, I mean, the money that we granted, as long as they met, if none of that money could potentially be, have to be returned.
Harper money?
Yes.
Not at this point.
Okay, that's why I wanted to make sure, but otherwise it's.
Councilmember Boyd?
Maybe we can look at the water towers and put text on there at some point, since we can't put a water sign. There's a text on the water towers that say City of Colleen, similar to City of Temple, that would be, it's an idea. Tech Dot, I met one of the Tech Dot commissioners last week on the 5015, the governor, and he's interested in coming to visit our community. I think if we do that, we can take advantage of, he has some questions, he's cleared a bunch of questions.
For history.
We talked about beautification a lot in Colleen, most of the time we're talking about Rancier, we're talking about Veterans Memorial, but we don't really talk about Fort Hurst Street, specifically the section between where McDonald's is and where all the clubs are on that corner down there, the National. That is a rough looking area, you're doing windshield drive through our city. A lot of people are coming in 195 to pass university and et cetera, you get to that dead point before you get to McDonald's, it's just like, what's happening?
You're right.
So that's a Tech Dot road, I do think we should push the conversation there and begin to put emphasis on that, because if that gets dressed up like Rancier, and then they're rebutting Rancier, that would change the whole look coming in there, so.
If I'm not overstating by Tech Dot, about the agreement we have with Tech Dot.
But I think Mr. Boyd's talking about more than cleanup, I mean, business littering.
Right, a little bit more than that. Even if it's, we're talking about kind of, reach, start by sidewalks, like making that nice overtime, overtime, overtime.
And painting all the infrastructure.
The infrastructure, yeah, really dressing it up. All we do really is mow right now, but if you get curving done, all that, that would be great. The last in relation to beautification.
Can I throw in, paint those columns right there, I'm just, he let me stop so I can throw it in.
He was there, he was there. But go ahead, Mayor Proton.
Let's paint those columns when you're going on the bridge. Have you seen in Nolanville, they got this light shelf, and the columns are painted, it's not going to take much, but sometimes it's red, sometimes it's blue, and I think if you're standing at the stop sign and you see that, you don't get a little happy. So, yeah, it's your turn, Kenny.
Okay, the last session of the lady of beautification, Fort Cabosso is, two years ago, I ended up speaking to the Secretary General, and he was telling me that some of these basics, they're able to get soldiers to partner with the neighborhoods in the city, similar to what we do at the school districts, and those soldiers will come out with the community in case we work to clean and beautify those neighborhoods, and it was like a partnership they had, and I didn't even know that existed. We talked about working together with them to help beautify, and perhaps we should look into that, to see if that's possible, because it's one thing to see the city out there working, but then to get the whole community, get our soldiers, it's really like we're all there.
Thank you, so that's, that's a good one, I like that one. And one thing, one more thing, if I go with Solomon, is that if we cannot get anything coming in from Harper Heights, do we have any billboards out there that we can purchase? Or we can put, Welcome to Colleen, Texas is high, but this is something coming in from Harper Heights?
I can't picture what billboards are out there, but purchasing a billboard?
We had one.
You're purchasing.
We're talking about coming in that way.
Yeah, we had one.
Where?
Right there when you had west, and we ended up trading for it, but there is one there, right there, as you come in where the sign used to be, there's one on the right side, and I don't know if we still use that, if we rented, but there is one right there.
It's not very good, I think you're talking of being.
No, I'm talking about anything we can put, Welcome to Colleen, something is better than nothing, right, correct me, Mayor Proton?
Yes, we want something. And again, I can get.
Sit on it.
I can sit on whatever. But I sit because I think, if you're ever going to sit at the most important points of the city, you'll see a lot, you'll meet a lot, it's a lot to see.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Solomon?
Thank you, ma'am. To that point, I noticed that Belton uses their bridges, you know.
Right, always say Welcome to Colleen.
Yes.
He's talking about the overpass, okay, that's.
The overpass, like say from, coming from the west, coming from Copper's Cove, I could not reuse that.
The overpass, so Mr. Kay, yeah, he gonna look at, that's a great idea, that's the best one I heard of in the piles. Okay, so these are great ideas, so we have gone through, and I thank you, council, for taking your time to come out for our city council, so your priority, thank the residents and staff. Mr. Cagle has something to go on. If you get home and you think of something else, Mr. Council, have not made a final decision, please feel free to email that to Mr. Cagle, and he can add that to our priority list. If there's no more alibis, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Be adjourned.
Be adjourned.